Good evening and welcome to December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Jason Lear and I'm Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. To begin this evening, I'd like to call on Commissioner Beeson for the city's land acknowledgement statement.
Since time immemorial, the Kalapooia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance of wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between eighteen fifty-one and eighteen fifty-five, Kalapooia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government, forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapooia Ilahi. Kalapooia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Braun, community of Oregon, Confederated Tribes of the Sletz Indians of Oregon, and they continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the Planning Commission recognizes what we do today will affect the many generations who will come after us.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. Thanks to everyone for joining us in this virtual meeting format. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing on a site-specific change to the property's land use designation in the Metro Plan and Willacanzi Area Plan, as well as changing the zoning of the property. The three concurrent applications would facilitate the applicant's desired zone change from E one campus employment to E two mixed-use employment. More information will be provided during the staff presentation. Given that this is the only agenda item tonight, we anticipate moving on to deliberations and possible recommendation after the hearing. Anyone wishing to access and participate in the public hearing can do so by following the access instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. Planning Commission meetings can also be viewed by watching the livestream available on our website or the broadcast on Comcast Channel twenty-one. If you wish to speak and provide testimony tonight, please know that we will begin the testimony portion of tonight's meeting after a brief presentation from staff. When we reach that point, staff will provide instructions about the virtual hearing format and how to participate. Before we start, I want to let you know a bit about the Planning Commission and our role in the process. First, we're unpaid volunteers appointed by the Eugene City Council, who all live and work in Eugene, like many of you. For this set of applications, we are not the decision-makers. Rather, we will review the proposal, testimony, and other relevant materials, and make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will hold their own public hearing before making the final decision on the proposal. We're at-large members, which means we have to consider the needs of the community as a whole, as well as the needs of all groups and neighborhoods. We're also human beings, which means each one of us has personal views that make us who we are. But as planning commissioners, we're committed to balancing all of our needs as a community and to making the best recommendations we possibly can based on our policies and our laws for us and for future generations. That can be pretty tough to do, and we know not everyone will agree with every recommendation we make. So as we proceed this evening, we want you to know upfront that we're listening and that we care deeply about you and about our community. We recognize how important these changes are and encourage everyone speaking tonight to do so in a respectful and productive way. That said, given the topic of tonight's hearing, some of the terms we have to use are legalistic, so I'll try to explain the requirements in plain language the best I can. Since this hearing, since this is a hearing for a site-specific application, there are unique procedures which are legally required to follow. The decision-making process for this application is considered quasi-judicial, so we will use a quasi-judicial format for this public hearing. Before we begin, the Eugene Code also requires that planning commissioners disclose any conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts, biases, or abstentions. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, these parties are entitled to an impartial or the parties are entitled to an impartial or neutral decision-maker. To ensure this fair consideration, the Eugene Code and the Planning Commission's rules attempt to limit ex-party contacts or communications between a party and the decision-maker outside of the public hearing process. Each planning commissioner must disclose and describe the substance of any communication they've had about this application outside the public process. The planning commissioners must also disclose any conflicts of interest, that is, whether the decision they are about to make could or would result in a personal financial gain or loss for themselves, their relatives, or a business with which the commissioner or the commissioner's relative is associated. Finally, a planning commissioner cannot participate if they are biased. That is, for whatever reason, they are incapable of making an objective decision on the applications. Before asking if any commissioners have anything to disclose, I would like to disclose that I'm co-owner of a property management company that manages units all over Eugene. Some of the units my company manages are located maybe within five or six blocks of the property that's subject of this zone change and comprehensive map change application. So out of an abundance of caution and to avoid any appearance of impropriety on declaring a potential conflict of interest with regard to this application, I can also confirm that my decision on the application will be based solely on the applicable approval criteria and the evidence and argument in the record. I've been advised by the city attorney's office that following my declaration of this potential conflict of interest, I can participate in the commission's discussion and recommendation on the application. Do any other commissioners have anything to disclose? Does not appear so. Does anyone in the audience or a member of the commission wish to challenge the impartiality of any of the planning commissioners? Anyone in the audience, Crystal?
We had someone who had their hand raised prior to asking that question. So, John, will you lower your hand and re-raise it again if you would like to challenge anything? Okay, not seeing the hand change, I'm gonna go ahead and say that we don't have anyone in the audience wishing to challenge.
Okay. So I'd like to invite our moderator, Crystal, to provide some information for tonight's hearing.
All right, back to me. Hello, everyone. I am Crystal Fisher, and I'll be the moderator for tonight's meeting. I want to thank you all for joining us in this virtual hearing and note that our hearing is going to be recorded. Since we're meeting virtually and this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I will provide specific instructions on how to request to speak before we begin the public testimony section after the staff's brief presentation. So with that, it's great to have everyone here tonight, and I will hand it back to you, Chair.
Thank you, Crystal. As she said, we'll begin with a brief presentation from Sean and then move on and open the public hearing. Sean, all you.
All right, my name is Sean Burgett, and good evening. I'm the associate planner here with Eugene, city of Eugene. And let me share my screen. All right, everybody see that? Good, welcome. So tonight, we're at a public hearing for the Shepherd Motors' zone change. Here is the order of procedures. And I just want to note, I talked to the applicant's representative, and they don't plan on having a presentation tonight. However, they're, they're planning to be in the audience, so they may have some comments to share with us. When we get to that point, the instructions on speaking are to the right, kind of giving you instructions on how to raise your hand and provide commentary. The case file numbers are MA twenty-four-one, RA twenty-four-one, and Z twenty-four-four. So how does zoning work? Now, this slide here kind of gives you a brief overview of how that, how it is applied. The Metro Plan is the long-term policy document. The refinement plan is additional policies and refined maps. And then you have zoning, which includes our base zone and overlay zone and kind of how these standards are applied. So the request for the Metro Plan Amendment, the current land use designation for the site is Campus Industrial. The requested land use designation is Light-Median Industrial. The Willacanzi Area Plan Amendment, which is the refinement plan for the area, is also being amended. The current land use designation is Special Light Industrial, and they're requesting a new designation as Light-Median Industrial. As far as the zone change request, part three of this proposal, the current base zone is E one Campus Employment. They are requesting a new base zone of E two Mixed Use Employment. You can see the subject property here in this kind of aerial view. You see old Coburn Road running along the eastern frontage of the site. And in a moment, let me show you the zone map. The zone map gives you a little more context, because you can see the R one zoning to the north with residential property, some R two zoning to the east. And then, of course, you have some more E two zoning to the southeast, which is property owned by the applicant's applicant, and the same zoning designation they're proposing under this proposal. And you can see the E one to the southwest here. So as far as the evaluation goes of the Metro Plan Amendment, and as you've seen in our report or my recommendation, we feel it's consistent with statewide planning goals, consistent with the Metro Plan, not internally inconsistent, consistent with Envision Eugene Comprehensive Plan. And as far as the evaluation of the Refinement Plan Amendment, it's also consistent with statewide planning goals, consistent with Envision Eugene Comprehensive Plan, and consistent with remaining Willacanzi Area Plan policies. So overall, as far as the zone change goes and that evaluation, as previously indicated, it's consistent with the Metro Plan as amended, consistent with the Refinement Plan, Willacanzi Area Plan as amended, also satisfies the transportation planning rule in OIR. It's served by key urban facilities and also meets the zoning code's siting requirements. So as far as conclusion and recommendation, this proposal complies with the applicable approval criteria for each application. And staff recommends the planning commission deliberate following the public hearing and issue a recommendation for council's approval of this Metro Plan Amendment, Refinement Plan Amendment, and Zone Change. And possible motion, move to recommend that the city council approve the applicant's request, requested Metro Plan Amendment, Refinement Plan Amendment, and Zone Change. And with that, that will conclude my presentation tonight, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sean. Before we open the public hearing, I've got a few more details to share regarding our order of operation, our order of operations. We will begin the public hearing with testimony from the applicant, although I think in this case, we may not have any. And then the testimony will be received in the order that people have requested to speak. Following public testimony, city staff will have the opportunity to respond to the testimony provided and answer any questions that might come up. Finally, the applicant will be given the opportunity for a final comment if desired. I know commissioners have asked for more clarity on when it's appropriate to ask questions, and staff has suggested that if you have questions about someone's testimony, you should ask those questions following the individual's testimony. Following the conclusion of public testimony, staff will have the chance to respond to the public testimony presented, and commissioners will have the opportunity to ask additional questions of staff. I remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the planning commission and other parties to respond will preclude future appeals on that issue. In other words, please raise issues as clearly as you can so that the city and other parties can address them. As always, please contact staff if there's any testimony you are not able to provide in this hearing or testimony that you wish to provide regarding these applications. Before we open the public hearing, Crystal has some further instructions for us for providing testimony. Crystal?
Thanks, Chair Lear. So hi again. Now it's time to sign up to speak, and I see we have a couple of hands already in the queue, so that's great. You can get into the queue by raising your virtual hand. To do this, please click the raise hand button in the menu if you're joining us on a computer or smart device. If you're joining us by phone, you must dial star nine, and you will receive audio confirmation that your hand was raised. You can start raising your hands now as I keep providing these instructions. For speaking tonight, at the start of your testimony, please begin by clearly stating your name, your address, and whether you're in support, in opposition, or neutral to the proposal. I will announce whose turn it is to provide public testimony, as well as announcing who is up next. When you are called to provide testimony, you will be promoted to a Zoom panelist, which will allow you to unmute and turn on your video if you choose. Please do not unmute or turn on your video until it is your turn for public testimony. When your public testimony is concluded, you will be returned to the Zoom attendee status. Public testimony is limited to three minutes, and you will be muted when your public testimony is concluded. So please be mindful of your time. If there are any technical difficulties that are encountered when you try to speak, we'll move on to the next person in the queue and try you again after that person's had time to comment. All that said, I'll hand it back to the chair for now.
Now, I'd like to open the public hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to receive relevant testimony on the applications before us. I want to remind everyone that your testimony should be directed toward the approval criteria that you believe apply to these applications. We ask you to frame your testimony in terms of the applicable approval criteria, because the Eugene Code requires that our recommendation be based on these criteria. The applicable approval criteria for the proposed amendments and zone change are from Eugene Code Sections nine point seven seven three five, nine point eight four two four, and nine point eight eight six five. These criteria are listed and addressed in the planning commission packet for this evening. Crystal, how many speakers are currently in the queue?
We have three, including the applicant's representative.
Okay, thank you. We will now encourage people to submit any written testimony as well. Written testimony may be submitted via email, by mail, or in person. More detailed instructions on how to submit written testimony are included in the materials for this meeting and are available on the application notices. We'll now begin public testimony, beginning with the applicant. So, Crystal, I'll hand it off to you to begin.
Excellent, thank you. Again, I want to remind anyone to raise their hand if you'd like to speak tonight. Also, at the start of your testimony, please begin by clearly stating your name, your address, and whether you're in support, in opposition, or neutral to the proposal. With that said, we're going to begin testimony from the applicant's representative, Mike Reader.
Jeff's got his hand up too.
Yeah, sorry, right before I interrupt Mike here with his introduction, but I recognize that Commissioner Isaacson has joined us. Welcome, Commissioner Isaacson. Glad to have you here. We're here for, as you know, a quasi-judicial land use decision, which comes with that caveat of disclosing any ex parte communications, potential conflicts of interest, anything of that nature. Just want to get your confirmation as to whether or not you need to disclose any ex parte contacts for this in order to move forward.
I do not, and thanks for letting me back in. Traffic's been a little, little crazy getting back to home base before the meeting today.
All right, great. Thank you, Commissioner, and apologies to the applicant for interrupting and also interrupting Crystal. So, thanks, everyone.
No worries. Thanks, Jeff, for catching that. Okay, so apologies, I left off. So, Mike Reader, you're going to be speaking first. John, I'm going to be adding you to the queue next. And so, let's see here. All right, Mike, you may begin. John, I'm gonna add you in.
Good evening, Chair Lear and planning commissioners. My name is Mike Reader. I am the attorney for the applicant, Shepherd Motors, and Phil Spears. I apologize, my office is near the railroad tracks, so you're gonna hear the railroad go by occasionally. My office is three seven five West Fourth Avenue, Suite two oh five, Eugene. First of all, I want to start off by thanking staff for the very smooth review of this application and for the staff report. The staff report is comprehensive enough that I don't really have a whole lot to add. And so, I'm not going to waste everyone's time by repeating what's in the staff report. I am available for questions if any planning commissioners have questions. I'd be happy to try and answer those. Since I don't know who's on virtually, Phil Spears had hoped to be here tonight. He may be here tonight, but I can't see him. If he's not here tonight, he apologizes. He's traveling. If he is here tonight, he is available for any specific questions that commissioners may have. So since I can't see whether or not he's here, I'm just going to throw it out, throw that out there. So if any planning commissioners have questions for the owner or applicant, we'll give it a try. And if he's not available for whatever reason, I can try and answer any questions you might have. Also, I believe available tonight is the applicant's transportation engineer, Chris Clamell. So he is available for questions should any planning commissioner have questions regarding transportation issues. So he is available for questions should any planning commissioner have questions regarding transportation issues. The, uh, staff report is thorough, goes through the consistency with the Metro Plan, with the Refinement Plan, which is the Willackensie Area Plan, as well as the zoning, uh, zone change criteria. Um, the, uh, applicant has reached out to the neighbors. Um, and Phil, Mr. Spears has done a, a good job of reaching out to neighbors along the way throughout this process. Uh, we believe that this, uh, zone change and Metro Plan Map Amendment and Willackensie Area Plan Refinement Amendment will be beneficial for the, not only for the neighborhood, but for the entire community. Right now, the E one zoning is not a productive zone in this area.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. It's much more productive, and I think will be helpful, uh, for, uh, Eugene's economy. So with that, I will close. If you have any questions, please let me know. I'm available. Uh, I don't know if there's any need for any rebuttal, depending on, on who, who shows up tonight, but if there is need for rebuttal, I reserve time for that as well. Thank you.
Excellent. And, um, anyone else who was in the queue, uh, dropped out, so, um, or is John? No, John, you're still here. I'm so sorry. Thank you. John, you are up next.
Hi, I'm John Favel. I live at two two one six Marie Lane in northeastern Eugene. And I'm speaking with the, uh, point of view of the Northeast Neighbors Neighborhood Association Board, which is unanimously in support of both the plan amendments and the zone change. Uh, Phil Spears has been terrific at keeping us informed and involved over the years of all of his development. Uh, there are two neighborhood groups directly affected by the location, Hawthorne Estates and, uh, Stonebridge Apartments. Uh, when the, the applicant held a neighborhood, uh, uh, meeting several months ago, uh, people from both were there, and again, were very comfortable with what he's proposing. So just wanted to voice the Neighborhood Association's support.
Excellent. Uh, are you relinquishing the rest of your time?
Feel free to use the rest of my time for whatever you want.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and that concludes the number of people we have in the queue at least.
Okay, we're all set on that. Um, thanks to you both for taking your time out of your evening to share your thoughts with us. Uh, does staff have any comments or response at this time? Anything from you, Sean?
Um, no, I, I appreciate the Neighborhood Association, um, providing commentary. It was nice to have, you know, their thoughts on the record, so, thank you.
And I see Commissioner Bailing's hand up. I'm just about have any questions of staff, and also just note to keep in mind, there'll be an opportunity to ask questions of staff later tonight, following the close of the hearing for any items that may be needed for follow-up during deliberations. Commissioner Bailing?
Yes, actually, I have a question for John Favel, who just spoke on behalf of the Neighborhood Associations. I'd like to know, John, if either of the, uh, groups you mentioned expressed any concerns at all, and if so, what those were.
Uh, no, actually, at the, uh, 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 neighborhood meeting that Mike also alerted, uh, alluded to several months ago, um, people felt very comfortable with Phil Spears and his existing establishment as a commercial neighborhood for residential areas and, uh, asked questions because one of, uh, some of the potential uses have to do with, uh, affiliated, uh, pieces of, of, uh, enterprise deal, you know, connected to the Veterans Administration, and they, they wanted to know more about that. Though none of them, uh, none of the issues that came up lingered in people's minds as a, as an ongoing issue. Does that answer?
Sounds like we're good for Commissioner Bailing. Commissioner Edwards, did you have a question, or did you want to? You're good for now? I assume you're good for now.
Thank you. I'll wait till deliberations. I just had a question for staff, but thank you.
So now is the opportunity to provide, uh, for the applicant to present any final statements. Uh, does anyone speaking on behalf of the applicant wish to provide any final statements?
Again, for the record, this is Mike Reader. I don't have any final statements other than, uh, thank you. And thanks to the Planning Commission for volunteering your time.
Thanks, Mike. The Planning Commission public hearing and record are closed. Um, unless we feel we need to hold the record open for any reason, staff? Good to close?
I'm sorry, we just had someone raise their hand as an attendee. Oh, and they just lowered it, so.
Okay. Well, do we want to keep it open if someone wants to provide additional testimony?
Just for context, uh, the person who raised their hand is Phil Spears, who is also the applicant. Um, so if, if we'd like for him to speak as, uh, upon, for the, an extension of the rebuttal period, uh, we could hear from him briefly, I believe.
Yeah, Phil wants to speak, by all means.
Okay. Uh, Phil, I'm promoting you to a panelist right now, and that will allow you the ability to, um, mute, uh, or unmute and turn your video on if you would like.
Okay, I think I'm here.
You are, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. My apologies. I was traveling, and I'm, I'm now back. But, uh, no, I just wanted to thank everybody for, uh, the opportunity and, uh, here to answer any questions if I can. But, uh, my apologies for being late. So I, I hope, uh, it all went well, and I'll be here to answer any questions and rebuttal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And, uh, do we have any requests to hold the record open? Are we good to close the record?
Staff has not received any requests to close the record. Or, uh, I mean, hold the record open. My apologies.
The Planning Commission public hearing and record are now closed. Um, so we'll now begin deliberations on the proposal. Um, I believe we've already, do we need to? Now, we're all good on ex parte contacts. Um, so yeah, now we're into deliberations. Commissioner Edwards?
Hey, thank you, Chair Lear. I, you know what? I am, because I think it's, it's somewhat of a, of an important point of clarification, I was wondering if staff could just touch on. So, um, I'm looking at page thirty one in the packet. There's a section, um, the second paragraph down that starts with streets, and it talks about how the subject property, um, uh, it's a criterion that, that they would have to have frontage on Old Coburg Road or one of the major arterials, which this subject property, to my understanding, does not. However, if you read further down, um, on page, the following page, page thirty two, it does talk about the contiguous nature of the zoning, and so I'm just wondering if staff could just, it's a point of clarification for anyone watching or anything else, or for the Planning Commission's, um, benefit, to just kind of explain that component of the criterion.
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Uh, again, Sean, forget it, planner. Um, so basically, yeah, the code does say it has to be contiguous with other E two property, and there's an E two property just to the southeast of the site that's bisected by Old Coburg Road, which kind of turns into Chad Drive. Uh, so based on the definition of development site, in the, in the development, in the definition of criteria in the code, it defines a development site as being, it can, it can be bisected by a street. Uh, and so that was how, basically, we were, we were, um, able to make that, um, kind of connection that, yes, the code defines contiguous development site, and it includes language that allows that to be bisected by a street. So in this case, we consider that E two's own property to the southeast contiguous under that definition for the purpose of this approval criteria.
And, and I'll just lift that up a little bit to say, like, what we're talking about here is, um, the citing requirements. That's the criterion. And basically, it says you need to be on an arterial or you need to be contiguous. So this is just, the, they've opted for the second option to be contiguous. Thanks, Sean.
Commissioner Ramey, uh, is that everything for you, Commissioner Edwards? Commissioner Ramey?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question about the, the air photo. I'm in, in the category of dumb questions, as always. The air photo doesn't show any development, uh, east of Old Coburg Road. But is it, hasn't that land been developed as a, as the same kind of use we're talking about here?
Oh, well, the aerial was taken from recent G I S images, so, yeah, I'm assuming based on that aerial image, yeah, the land hasn't been developed.
So I, I can actually cover that one a little bit more. Um, we get our air photos done every three years. That one is from twenty twenty three. Um, Shepherd Motors recently, uh, closed up and, or, uh, closed down their permits and got everything done, and it's now operating as the, um, the auto sailors, auto sale dealership across the street. So that is, uh, at this point, the lar, one of the large parcels on the east side of the road there is fully developed. Um, the site that is for this, uh, Metro Plan Amendment Zone Change is not developed, so that is still correct. It's just a green field at this point.
Okay. Well, again, uh, that helps me understand what's going on here, because I, I could, I'm like, what? That's not grass. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bailing?
My question was similar because I looked at the site on Google Earth, and it very clearly shows the Volkswagen Volvo and Hyundai dealerships, which did not show on the presentation pages eight and nine. Um, but it left me wondering what else might exist in the neighborhood that isn't being reflected on that three-year-old, um, view that you have. And also, there's a lot of land, additional land behind those three existing dealerships. And, uh, it may be irrelevant, but I find myself wondering why than the push for the parcel across the street instead of the existing parcel already owned by Shepherd. Does that make sense? I'm, you know, it's surrounded by residential on two sides and the V A Hospital on the third. And here we are struggling to come up with places for additional housing, and it, I, I'm torn by it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bailey. Um, I'll, I'll take a crack at it just because Sean is newer to Eugene. Um, I'm not gonna expect him to know every development that's occurred since in the last two years. Um, so, uh, out in that part of town, actually, the auto dealership is pretty much the only new thing that's occurred in that area. Um, there are talks of other things developing in some of the other vacant parcels out there. Um, but to my knowledge, there's no active, uh, permitting going on for those. Um, that's, and so that's just to answer that question. The maps are otherwise accurate beyond the auto mall that now exists there. Um, uh, to your second question regarding why the applicant is seeking this parcel, um, I can't really, you know, I'm not gonna try to guess what, what the applicant's motives or intent is. I know that in their application, Sean, can you describe what they're, I know, today we're talking about a zone change and just to like, it's not, we're not talking about a specific development. It's anything in E two can go on that property. Um, Mike Reader, the applicant stated, talked about kind of how E one is not seeing the development levels that you would expect of raw land. Um, and so they said they're going to E two to expand the amount of uses and for them to support the actual, uh, Sean, what were they, what are they proposing exactly in their application, they said?
Um, basically, they said the E two use that was allowed, that was, I think, I believe it was vehicle, basically vehicle storage, um, over in that area for the auto dealership.
One other point of clarification, Gabe Flock, Principal Planner. I, my understanding, and Jeff, maybe you can confirm this by recollection, having reviewed their, um, building permits, but the, um, the adjacent property between the Shepherd Motors, um, facility that was built most recently, N I five, is largely encumbered by a variety of easements that may in fact preclude their ability to develop it. And so to, to try to get, I think, to, you know, the essence of your question, Commissioner Bailing, I, I, I think it's that that property is encumbered, encumbered in such a way that they, they couldn't proceed, uh, with what they want to do there.
Thank you. Um, the only reason this raised concerns for me is because there are so many uses allowed under E two that I think would be just horrible on that lot. That I, I, uh, I, I, I'm conflicted about it. E two allows a lot of, um, activity that I would consider to be undesirable adjacent to residential.
Hold on, one thing about the, the E one and E two zoning is they both have the same, um, basically landscape setback requirement along the residential zone. So regardless of whether the zone is E one or E two, they'll still be required to have a ten-foot buffer area landscape to the L four buffer standards in the code. And so that would be required both under E one and E two zoning in that area, avoiding that R one problem.
All right. Uh, I don't see any other hands up. The only deliberative comment that I would make is that, um, evaluating based on the correct criteria, it seems that the application would meet the requirements for approval. Um, Commissioner Isaacson?
I didn't want to interrupt you. If you wanted to finish your, your thought switch earlier.
Yeah, it was a pretty, pretty brief point.
Um, I, I just want to echo your, your comments. I feel like that it's met the criteria, but also, you know, Shepherd Motors has been a good steward of, of the, the land in our community and also providing, I think, really great jobs and, and being, um, someone that, uh, we can look towards. So, um, I'm, I'm comfortable with the, the criteria as well as, um, what, uh, it appears that, uh, we're gonna see their use of it. Um, and given that this is in literally my backyard, um, I'm, I'm also comfortable with, uh, with having them be part of my neighborhood.
Any other comments, deliberations, questions from planning commissioners? All right, not seeing any. Does anyone want to propose a motion? And maybe we could put that motion language that's recommended on presentation if possible, or if somebody's just got it in front of them. Commissioner Edwards?
I don't have it in front of them, but I'm happy to make a motion.
I'm happy to second that motion.
Can we get that motion language available? My script also ends right here, so.
Yeah, I, there isn't language in the packet. I, I look for it, but.
Sean, would, Sean, would you be able to share that screen of the, the last page of that presentation?
Oh, you're gonna make me read the screen? Okay.
Here, Sean. Okay, you got it.
All right. I would move to recommend that the city council approve the applicant's requested Metro Plan Amendment, Refinement Plan Amendment, and Zone Change.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does anyone want to make any comments or deliberations on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, could you please raise your hands? Count everybody over there. And anyone opposed? Abstaining? So we are unanimous in moving to recommend the city council approve the recommendation, or the application, I should say. Um, with that said, um, the meeting of the Planning Commission is now adjourned, unless I'm missing anything. Again, I'm missing the last couple paragraphs of the script. Just want to make sure I'm not, uh, missing any important legal bases for.
I'll, I'll just confirm you're not missing anything. That's literally just how short the end is.
Okay, great. Thank you all. Hope everyone has a great rest of your week.